I know she's really gotten a voice. Good afternoon.
Okay, I can pass the ground rules.
Okay. I'd give it chance for.
Give a minute.
Yeah, for him to.
Afternoon, Commissioner. Just thought I had 10 more minutes here. Sorry.
Good afternoons. Savannah Clement, Public Services. So because of no Monday Agenda Review meeting, we did throw a couple items on here to go over with the board today for next Tuesday. And one of those items is our local Solid Waste Financial Assistant Grant Amendment, which Commissioner Dahl is the signer for, for any changes. If you didn't know that, now you know.
Well, they sent me a deal, so I knew it. And then I go, huh, I don't think I've seen this. So I was asking Sean about it. Yeah.
So then pass it over.
Yeah. So what we call LSWIPA, our Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Grant, is a two-year grant that runs from July to June. So we are just finishing up quarter six of the eight. And we're tidying up on that grant. The state awards us $484,000 on a biannual. That is a 75-25 split, so we are reimbursed about $363,000 on that two years. We currently use those dollars to run our MRW facility at the transfer station. That's our household hazardous waste and other. So you're turning in your oils and chemicals and things of that there. We also use those dollars to facilitate our rural recycling program. And then a small amount of that is for the homeless encampment cleanup at Camp Hope. We pay one half of the garbage collection on that site. So we went through in April of 2023, made our best estimates at the time of where these funds and how to allocate them across those three projects. And now that we're in quarter, quarter six of that, we're just tuning that up a little bit. The overall dollar change is zero. We are reducing some of our recycling operations down and splitting that out between the MRW and the homeless encampment for a net change of about $9,800 across the three there.
Now be on, you said next Tuesday?
Yeah. So we request from the board to allow the commissioner to sign that, and then we'll add that to the consent agenda.
Be similar to what you would sign for Susan, or and we'll put it through consent. So it'll, but it'll all be already be signed prior to coming to the board.
I'm good with that.
And then we'll start the process again in April for the next two-year cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like us to go into executive session for 10 minutes now? Or go ahead and do that at the conclusion of the meeting?
Do you have any, are you expecting anybody online?
No.
Or we just continue along?
Sounds good.
Okay.
We have a pretty full agenda on Tuesday with public works items. We put a lot through Agenda Quick this week, and so we have quite a few mainly that Susan's going to discuss.
So good afternoon, Susan Eugenius, County Engineer. So we have several public works items, a mix of motion and consent. I'll just go through them in the order Savannah put them on the list. So we have the bid award for the Toodle, excuse me, Tower Road, Water Main and Juanita Way Booster Pump Station. That was the bid we opened about two weeks ago, or actually last week for, we had 11 bidders. The low bid was from Rachi and in an amount of $1,549,631.76. The second lowest bidder was approximately $5,000 above that. So we're recommending we go ahead and accept the low bidder. His paperwork checked out. There were no bar debarment and all of his documents were in order. Okay. The next two items are professionals, their service agreements. They're both with PBS in engineering and environmental. They, we did RFP processes for both of them separately, and they were the successful proposer on both contracts. The first one I have in my hand is not that, is surface emissions monitoring at Headquarters Landfill and Tenet Way Gap Landfill. This is to meet our air permit. It is set up as a task order based contract not to exceed $150,000 based on the tasks that we issue. The first task will be to develop their monitoring plans at their quoted rates. And then once we get beyond that, we'll have a standard testing protocol. But they'll pull off of the rates that we're accepting as part of this contract. When we go through the RFP project process, so this is a service, it's not a, so it's a personal service, not a professional service. So professional services apply to engineering architects. So they go through a slightly different process where you can't look at cost because this is actually sample collection and creating a report out of that is considered a service. So we go through, excuse me, and it's based on qualifications and cost. And when you send out your proposal, you send out your scoring matrix with it so that they know what it's going to be based on. So as a, we review these as a committee, and they were the successful applicant. and they were the successful applicant based on their cost and their experience. So this is surface air monitoring. The other one is a fixed fee for ground and surface water monitoring. That one is a fixed fee because the plan is already in place. So they bid on doing the plan to monitor the surface and groundwater samples to make sure we're not discharging hazardous materials off-site. So that was a fixed fee of $161,000, just a little over that, and that's quarterly sampling, reporting all of the quarterly reports, and then a year-end report.
And these are on Headquarters?
This is for Headquarters and Tenetway. So this is both. We have to do more, especially for the gas Headquarters. We have a more robust program than we will at Tenetway.
So is that for the emissions that we're not capturing and burning?
Correct. What is coming off the face of the fill. So they walk it in a grid pattern, and they have a air sniffer, for lack of a better term. One of the newer technologies that's becoming approved is actually to fly a drone, but that has not been completely approved by ecology and clean air yet. So they're working towards that. There's new contraptions that you can hit to it, hook to a drone, and they can fly, you can program it in a grid pattern. So when we get hits, we usually have to go back and make some adjustments to either what we're pulling on the flare. Do we have a spot where the tarp, the birds have gone through and pecked them open? Is it around one of our wells that we need to clean up? So.
And I'm sorry, did you say that the contract was, you had to set them out, and it's not to exceed that? Or is that what?
For the surface emissions, it's a not to exceed 150,000. They're going to set up the plan per their unit rates, hourly rates that we approved. And then after that, it'll be the cost to complete the samples per that plan, and we have a unit, an approved per test rate in the contract. So once they determine what is going to be approved by ecology, then we'll have a better idea. But we're, we're pretty confident 150 should cover the development and the quarterly sampling.
And the samples are only quarterly?
So Sean, air is, is it monthly or quarterly? It's quarterly. Yes.
And for the groundwater, often is that?
It's also quarterly.
Okay.
So it's not like some programs where if it rains, you have to go out and test your surface water. It is a quarterly, your stormwater runoff, it is a quarterly test.
Where do these go? Do we hang on to them in case they want to come in and look at our records, or do we ship them off to Southwest Air?
We have to, yeah, we submit them every quarter to the agency, and we make a copy of them. But yes, they are sent to the review agency. And much like water and sewer treatment, if you've, there's something wrong, they let you know.
Where do they take the water samples? Where's the leachate pond come into effect? Is that any part of this?
No, the leachate pond is not a part of this. The leachate discharges directly to Turwa through our pump, to a pumping system, yes. And we have a separate permit for that.
I'm sure we do.
What's the leachate considered? It's not groundwater or surface water. It's just runoff?
So the leachate is the stuff that comes out of the bottom of the landfill. It's that nasty black stuff. So it's considered an industrial waste. So we have a MPDS industrial permit to discharge that to the sewer system.
So where do we collect the surface water? Is that what runs off the top and into what, a trough somewhere?
We have, so around the landfill, there's a trough around the landfill that collects stormwater, and then that runs to a stormwater treatment facility before it goes offsite.
Okay. So Susan, real quick, can you, on the surface emissions, can you explain that process to me? Do they come up with a bid first, and then we ask, you're asking for the 150,000, or do we just say we want 150,000? And what's to prevent them from saying, okay, if they got 150,000 approved, we're going to use all 150 when it may only cost 130?
So what they, we do it on a task order basis. So they provide, we say, we want you to do, create the plan, and they'll come back with, we think it's gonna take 20 hours of this person, 10 hours of this person to create it. Let's go up for review. Then we'll have to respond to comments. That's another 10 hours. So based on our rates, we have approved. That's XYZ. Now, we can go back and say, 20 hours, that should take you six, and negotiate it down. We are not required to spend the whole entire $150,000. And then once their plan is approved, then we start doing the quarterly testing and paying for the tests that are in that plan.
So the negotiation and everything's already been done by the time you bring it to us. You've looked at their plan and said, this is what, you agreed that that's acceptable?
So in this case, we don't have the task orders going forward. Actually, I do, but I don't know what the cost of it is off the top of my head. But we do negotiate them on a task-by-task basis. This gives us a way to do that without having to frequently go out to add. And if anything weird does come up, we would come back to the board. And we have, we have these in place for civil services and environmental services, and we run task orders off of them. And when we get something big, we have to come back and amend it and have that discussion as to why we're spending so much with company A, B, C. What, how did you not predict how much you were going to spend?
I would add on to that, Susan, that as we sign these contracts, the hourly rates for the positions have already been negotiated and approved at that time. And so we're really negotiating on the hours per task order at that point in time.
Is there an acceptable differential that comes in at the end that we say, okay, we're okay with that? Or we need to come back and redo the numbers? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, if we're asking for 150, but if they come back for 175, what, what options do we have to say, well, originally we said it's 150, now you're coming in at 175? If the service needs to be provided, what do we do in situations like that?
So if we can't negotiate it down to the 150, we would have to come back to the board for approval.
Okay.
All right, what else do I have? So we have a resolution designating an applicant agent for a grant program that's through FEMA, the BRIC program, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities program is what BRIC stands for. Washington State actually runs the grant program, and we become a subrecipient to them. This is a federal grant through FEMA. We are applying, so Washington State runs this in an interesting manner. So when there's this federal money available, they do a pre-application process so that they pre-approve the applications they're bringing forward on the national level. So we have gone through that process and for, for several projects, and the project that they are feeling meets the requirements of this program is a planning study, I know everybody hates studies, for the Westover-Lomar area. I don't know how familiar you guys are of that, but you will get to know it very well. It is a frequent flooding area. So there is a creek that comes down off of the hills. Westover is just off of Nevada Drive. So the creek runs parallel down that slope. As you get to the bottom, it flattens out, and so that slows down. And it runs along Westover Drive, goes into a piping system, runs parallel to Westover, crosses Lomar, jumps into an open ditch, runs parallel Lomar for a while, and there's a subdivision that sits there. It runs around that, crosses under the railroad and the highway. Well, none of those homes are built lower than the river peak. And in addition to that, so it's free flow out of the creek. The creek, because the river level goes up, the creek level goes up, backs up. And there, when these constructions happen, the floodplain that existed was filled, and now these houses get impacted by this flooding. Tracy, do you know about how many times that's flooded in the past 10 years?
Yearly?
We, we shut down Lomar Drive, and people get cut off if they don't have a high vehicle. So this has been a problem for us. We, every time we shut it down, we get calls and what we're going to do. We don't have a good solution. So we're applying for this Building Resiliency, Infrastructure in Communities program to do a study of what is our best solution and a benefit cost, so then we can move forward down a path to solving this. This has been going on since the 80s that they've been having these issues in the neighborhood. And we never have had a path forward on how to effectively mitigate this flooding. So this grant application, Building Resilient Infrastructure, is a newer program, like within the past five years. And the way it's written is they want you to make repairs and improvements so that we don't get frequently flooded roadways and homes, and our community will be more resilient. So that's their purpose behind these grants, and they felt that this was a good option. So this resolution, we designate myself and Chris Andrews, who's the engineer who's working on this project, to submit all the application materials to apply for this grant. And if we were successful, we'd bring it back before the board.
Was this all the, when you turn off West Side and headed up Nevada, it used to be a trestle there. There's no longer there. We talking, there's, I think, one, two, all those houses that sit right down low before you head up the hill?
So as you make the turnoff West Side Highway, you would go under the trestle, and off to the left is Lomar Drive.
Left is Lomar, and then there's a little older division.
Yes, that's Westover.
So that, those are the ones that we're having.
Yes, and that's the area we're looking at.
And you said this started in the 80s. This is basically because of the mountain and the fill in the river, and the river is raised because of the sediment?
It's probably a combination of that and the way it developed. Yes.
So if we dredge the river, we could solve the problem?
I don't think we would have completely, it would make it better, but I don't think it would solve it. It would definitely make it better, but don't think it would be a complete solution.
So what alternatives, can you give me an idea, just a ballpark, what kind of ideas you're floating around to fix this?
So there are buying up some property down at the bottom beyond where it daylights and creating more storage area there. There is open channel of flowing it along the houses, creating a storage area before you reach the houses. And this is one that I know is not going to be popular, but it's going to be potentially buying out some houses and demolishing them and making that the storage area. I don't know what the solution is. And that is why we want to have a serious look at what is the best solution to make this area work.
And did you say that you're? Under the houses, so they float up and down and give everybody a boat to get to their house.
They do it on the ones on the river, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Foundation raising.
That's far enough up the river. It's not affected by tidal. It changes it?
Yes, it is. The tidal change stops somewhere north of Lexington. So they're at the very northern end of it. It's, it used to go all the way up to Castle Rock, but it's now somewhere between Lexington and Castle Rock.
Okay. And did you say you want to apply for the grant to do the study to give us the options, or the study and implementing whatever you find in the study?
So the grant program would only allow us to apply for the study, but that would set us up moving forward to apply for the grant and actually fix it.
I was just coming up to add that this is one of the grant opportunities. We worked with David Hodges, who is our lobbyist for the county to try to provide these types of opportunities. I believe he is the one that kind of got us started on this path. And it is complicated in that the program itself is a kind of a precursor to maybe opening up other grant fundings through this program. So.
Okay.
The trouble is, these roads are dead-end roads. There's one way in, one way out. So when you're covering water, they're not, if you don't have the right vehicle, you're not getting out, right?
Right. And you mentioned boats. They, a lot of residents actually have boats on those roads.
So they could get out?
So the houses don't actually flood? It's just the road?
So historically, houses have flooded.
The annual flooding is the road, but there are, what, two to, every two to 10 years, the homes will flood also.
So there wouldn't be a major advantage in raising the road? Just raising the road wouldn't fix this? Okay.
And then there, I'm not sure which ones, and then they've also purchased one or two on Alpha. And they've raised a couple of the homes on Alpha. They raised their foundations. So Alpha's like the next road over from Nevada. So. And that is another road that we, narrows down to one lane, and it gets closed through traffic quite frequently.
Yeah, and I can attest to that several times a year. That's number one area. That and Ostrander.
Ostrander, Alpha, and Westover are frequent flyers.
Okay. When FEMA does buy those houses, do we, do they give a market value plus a certain percentage? Do we know what they buy them for?
Yeah, I don't know what they buy them for. And what they do with the property is they turn it over to the county. And we have FEMA properties, and the only thing we can use them for is passive recreation or creating, reconnecting floodplains. Those type of activities is what we can use them for.
You can't use them to develop this reservoir area to?
Yes, that, that counts because that's reconnecting the wetland. So, and it's a stormwater function, so a frequently flooded area can be made into a stormwater facility. But it's parks, stormwater facilities, and your parks cannot have any permanent structures besides bathrooms. You can have playground equipment that you can hose off, but they don't want you making buildings that then you're going to be asking them to repair.
Okay.
Oh, what else exciting do we have? We talked about that one. So they also have a possession and use agreement for the Shadow Mountain Reservoir Project, so we can keep moving forward on that. This was one we brought forward in the fall. Got the permission for the commissioner to sign, and it has been recorded, and we're just moving it through on the consent agenda. And then the other exciting items you're going to see are annual Title VI reports. So because we receive federal funding, every January 31st, we need to have submitted to WashDOT a report of what our public outreach was, what translation services we used, was our outreach to communities of non-English speakings. Did we include translation services? So this is an annual report that Public Works prepares that we bring to the board for signature every year. Yes, we are in compliance with Title VI. So the other item, Savannah, you didn't get my full list. The other item I have is the emergency contract out on International Way. So we're following through with the resolution declaring the emergency, the contract we established with AES, and the signed request from myself to Mike establishing that. Just to give you an update on where we are at, we had the bypass pumps installed. Thursday, before the end of the day, we bypass pumped all weekend because they were concerned. We bypass pumped all weekend because they were concerned on opening it up without having the repairs. They got in there on Monday, had their soaring dug all the way down to the pipe, measured it, it is a 15-inch diameter pipe. You could clearly see there was a hole in the top of it. So they went and measured the length that they needed, got that length of stick and the couplers that you use to attach it, the damaged pipe. They had all of that on site Tuesday morning. So they made the repair yesterday and they started cleaning all the sand out of the pipe. The sand is, when I left the office, I called the inspector. He's like, we're 95% sure it's all clear. We're running the camera, the hole is filled, cold patch is on its way. So the intent is to be off-site by end of work today.
So if that section of the pipe had sand in it, how far do they inspect? Run the camera, how far to make sure it's clear?
So they're running the camera from manhole to manhole. So that whole section of pipe.
Beyond that, we don't know the condition?
Beyond the manholes, no. But this is a 450-foot run of pipe. So we are getting well upstream and downstream of the section that was damaged.
Okay.
So because we found the location where the hole was in the pipe, it was done by the boring?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know what caused the hole?
It was a boring that went through the top of the pipe. Good, thank you. That is all I have for the board on Tuesday. I went wild this week.
Okay, thanks, Susan.
He's part of that? Is Doug?
Doug gave us the blessing to discuss. We don't, unless he's contacted you. Did you say he's not there?
He's on there.
Oh, okay, perfect. So if, we can do that now, yeah?
We should do that now, then not waste his time if we can. So you're-
For sure.
It looks like it's potential litigation and you're expecting 10 minutes?
That's correct.
Okay, so we got Doug there. We'll cut off, we'll pick this back up when we come out of there and go to executive session.
Project. I know Steve and Steve, you've been both at a lot of the meetings that we've discussed this, but we are currently in the IGA phase, which is an investment-grade audit of our Hall of Justice building. And we're almost complete with that. And the IGA essentially develops an entire scope of work and design plan for the new infrastructure that we'll be putting in there, which is an HVAC system. In a nutshell, the current system there is a very large boiler with a cooling tower and then a smaller boiler and multiple, oh gosh, hot water heaters. And that essentially assists in heating the water of the building and then also heating and cooling the building as well. So there's a lot going on there. We're also integrating an electrical upgrade to that building. We have several fire, excuse me, several electrical panels that do not meet current code standards. So for safety reasons, we're tackling that as well. And then we hope to maybe do some, hopefully, some other upgrades like LED lighting for energy efficiency, et cetera. But the big core piece of this IGA that I'm kind of excited to learn more about when it's done is it's going to have the complete design of the whole project, but also kind of tell us all the nuts and bolts of what we've been dealing with there. So that'll be pretty interesting. And it'll also come up with a lot of our savings that we'll recoup once we get this energy-efficient system in place. So that's like a 30-second elevator speech of what's taken the better part of a year and a half. But that's currently where we're at. So what I've asked Milig, and Lauren Donnelly is the VP of Milig, and she's also our project manager, I've asked her to come next Wednesday and give the board kind of a nice, high-level overview of the project, where we're currently at, where we anticipate being here in the near future, and then just be available to answer any questions that you guys may have. So that'll be next Wednesday, she'll be here. So don't go too far in the weeds, but if you guys think of anything, be a great time. Any questions on that one? OPD move, we talked about that briefly as well. We always kind of tie that to the Annex Building, but we also have other items that we've been working with OPD on, which is Office of Public Defense. And again, currently we lease out their space at the River Suites Tower over there, I guess, is it south of the Hall of Justice? And we've also been working on getting them some ancillary space. One, excuse me, four office locations at the Hall of Justice, right on the first floor behind that cafe area, what will be our cafe. And then we're also, I did hear that Ian was able to meet with Marin and they also have an ancillary office at the jail, which will be great for them and their ability to meet with clients. So that's currently, they don't have any of that. They don't have any space at the hall. They literally, you know, sometimes will meet in the hallway with people. So it'll be great to get them in those spaces. So that'll be five office areas that they'll be able to move into sooner than later. And then, of course, the majority of the Annex Building will be housed by OPD staff members as well. So any questions on that? I'll move into the Annex, oh, go ahead.
That's just a lot of good improvements for OPD.
Yeah, yeah. We meet with them weekly. We do 9:00 AM Teams meetings. If at any point you, any of the board members would want to just drop in and kind of get a feel of where we're at or what goes into the process, more than welcome to attend those too. So just moving on to the Annex update, which is the end of my just agenda items that I have on here, is we believe we're wrapping up with the remediation efforts. So kind of the demo, tear down, tear out. We believe we're pretty much, if we're not done, we're almost done with that this week. So that's, that's great news. And then we'll be moving into, you know, kind of the rebuild phase of the building. And we've been working with RISK on that. They're essentially managing that contract and we're managing the, kind of the project side of it. So hopefully it won't take as long as they anticipated in the beginning. That's all we're on that. And then I have miscellaneous, and then I know you had a couple items, so go for it.
Because I didn't talk enough earlier. I do have one miscellaneous item that's not on the board agenda next week. I have a temporary construction easement for our Dyke Road project that I was, would like to bring forward and get approval for the chairman to sign off on so that we can keep that project moving forward. It's with the Waldos down on Dyke Road, 1299. Would you like a Dyke Road project update or rundown? If you're not familiar with it. So Dyke Road, this project will reconstruct a roadway in place from approximately Capels all the way up to where the scale house is for Stordahl. I believe it's Stordahl has a scale house, the port owns it down there. So during, five years ago, six years ago, when they were hauling out a lot of materials, the Dyke Road started deteriorating. So we went through and we did the section that was considered a local access road. We tried a different method, so we ground the asphalt in place, added cement and water, mixed it all together, put a floor stabilized base, and then overlaid it. This section is the larger section. It's from milepost 3.05 to 5.32, so it's over two miles. We have obtained County Road Administration Board RAP funding, which is the Rural Arterial Preservation Fund that we're eligible for. So we will be doing the same process, but we will also be widening out the road a little and removing clear zone obstacles. We've had this funding for quite a while, but the holdup on the project is we have to go through the whole Army Corps 408 process because all of the work is on the levy. The levy was in place prior to the roads, so the levy was built in the 1920s. The road waivers are from the late 40s. So we built the road on top of the dyke, so the dyke has the first rights on it. So we have rights from them. So their rights prevail, especially since there's federal dollars in it. So we're going through the 408 process. We are 10 months into the 408 process, so we're hopeful that we'll have our 408. It's usually anywhere from nine months to a year and a half. We're hoping for a year process so that we can go out to bid for this project in probably April or May, so we can still build it this summer, so the road does not get any worse. Whenever I'm in Woodland, that's the question I get, when is this road being done?
Is this, how many easements are you needing, or is this the last one?
I believe there is one more. The biggest easement was from the Dyking District, and we have secured that one. We also had a substantial easement from the Peterson family down there, the Peterson Family Trust, and we have that one. And there's one other name that's sticking in my head that's not this one, and I can't remember what the name is that I know we're working on, and that's a permanent easement. This is just one of the temporaries so that we can reconstruct the driveway during the process.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think that concludes our agenda. I'll leave just a few things to look forward to next week. We'll talk about the, not only will Millig be here, but I hope to discuss the Hall of Justice facility study, which will be looking at, you know, improving the current condition of the building or looking at another site. And then also we have the capital and tenant improvement policy update that I'd also like to start discussing with the board, give more information next week. And then my last update will be the Parks Legacy Project update. So I'll have some more information on that as well, so that'll be next week.
You may not know the answer on this, but I know the shooting range comes up like in August or something. When do you think we're?
Our, the contract ends December of next year. We'll probably start working on that this, this quarter. Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
The leasing?
Kind of curious of what kind of interests we'll have.
Yeah, starting sooner than later will be important, yeah. Unless Sheriff's Office wants to bid on it, I don't know. Kidding. Hey, yeah, one more thing.
In between chasing animals, stop by.
Yeah, why not? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Susan, you need me to sign that?
Please.
Okay, we can head right in, Brad, if you want to. Yeah, absolutely. You want to start on Humane Society? Is that where you want to start?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. Jason Lorraine with the Prosecutor's Office. I know that you gentlemen have been made aware of the ongoing negotiations with Humane Society. Probably the first, one of the first emails that was in your email inboxes was one for myself communicating with Kelso City Manager Andy Hamilton regarding some of the issues that I observed on a December 16 conversation between Humane Society representative and the Kelso City Council. Prior to observing that, that meeting, I've been involved in a number of conversations with the sheriff regarding negotiations with the Humane Society of Southwest Washington and for the development of a new contract for their services. Lowdown, I, I think back in August, there was a determination that they were going to take over, that Humane Society of Southwest Washington was going to take over Calis County Humane Society. That was eventually announced in October of this year. And promptly in first week of November, I believe, negotiations began with the sheriff. What became clear is that they wanted to negotiate away a facility, and the sheriff is not able to negotiate away a facility. That is for the board to determine. The Humane Society of Southwest Washington has made clear that they want the county to end all use in function of the current facility that was created by the board in conjunction with cities of Kelso and Longview, the facility at the jail. And in doing so, they've ramped up the prices for what they're quoting the sheriff as necessary to run their services. I believe that I've made the, both, made you aware of both the prospective costs that increases that Humane Society of Southwest Washington state are necessary. This was well back in September. They're suggesting that an increase in 70% for costs and services to all municipalities will be necessary, prospectively looking up to 90% increases in what has already been contracted for. Because this involves facilities as well as the sheriff who will run the facilities, he's not able to negotiate. We need, well, the board needs to be made aware of those ongoing negotiations, determine who you want to negotiate with them, whether it's the board itself or include our offices or the sheriff. But in order to continue with those negotiations, as well as some of the concerns that the sheriff is going to present to you, a decision needs to be made of what's going to happen going forward.
I sent an email to you gentlemen, I believe, on Monday, and hopefully you've had a chance to review that. And I guess kind of laid out kind of this history of how we got to this point and where we're at and the decisions that need to be made. So as Mr. Lorraine alluded to, we do have a, I guess, their contract price for this year would be $111,000. And part of that is they want to take every animal that our animal control comes in contact with, they would go to the local Humane Society as well. They would have an open door policy for citizens to bring in stray animals as well for that price. So that's, I guess, the, where we're at right now. Really don't have any other options per se. And as I laid out in the email together, I guess, looking forward, I guess, some alternatives perhaps that we could pursue. I guess I also mentioned the going back to negotiate with the Humane Society of Southwest Washington. Like we did already initially, they came in at the price of $170,000. We negotiated along with Longview and Kelso, we met and got the lower price of 111. So I don't think going back to them, to be honest with you, is going to be real productive at this point. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Here's I, I said in that, that council meeting, and I agree that I think you've negotiated down where you're going to be. Here's the fear, they, they, what they were offering Kelso, I think, was a per capita basis. It was like $4 and some odd cents. They were going to offer them for this one year contract. But then you posed the question, well, what do you charge down in your area down there? And it's anywhere from $9 to $15. So it doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand that after they have you for a year, that it's going to skyrocket up. And our contract before was based on $300 per animal. And that was really the driver. The sheriff said, what do you think about some temporary pins? So animals, if we can turn them over, get them back to their owners in 72 hours, we avoid that. We kind of cut that, that, that cost to the county. And I thought, it turned out real successful. I think better than we anticipated. We were able to return about 50% of the animals that we, we brought in, which was highly successful. Well, if they stay on a per animal basis, it's not going to be 300. Down there, they charge, if I remember their numbers right, they're anywhere from around 800 and better per animal. So I think we're kind of, in my personal view, I think we're kind of in a situation where we don't have a whole lot of choice but to work with the contract. But we're going to have to find a different solution before next year because otherwise hang on to your backside. Because they'll be, once they're, they're into you, they're going to really want to raise that. In my opinion, they are.
Yeah, I read through that a couple of times. And the numbers, I agree that 800 to 900 is what I came up with calculations that I find, I find that rather appalling. In addition to that was, I believe that any after hours vet needs or anything else was on top of all that.
Yeah.
And I, if I recollect correctly, it said that they neuter and release feral cats. Why in the hell would you spend the money neutering and releasing a feral cat back into the community? I don't grasp that one.
Their theory is, their hope is, they don't think they'll find a home for it, but they can at least stop it from breeding.
Well, yeah, and how many times is it going to get caught in the meantime and come to them and get released and get caught?
I hear you. The, the, the anti, you know, destroying of animals is pretty strong, and I think they try to avoid that.
Okay, well, reserve comment on that.
So Sheriff, in the email that you sent us, you had, you showed us, I believe it was 2019, 2020, you know, you gave us those, those different years as the costs were increasing. In the negotiation, current negotiations that we have, they came in at 170 or whatever it was, and they jumped down to 111. That's giving concessions to Longview, Kelso, to all the municipalities that are participating in that program?
Yes.
They just come in with that concession because they said, okay, we'll, we'll drop the contract to that.
And that was just the number, just for the county. The cities had their own numbers, and as part of that, they started out with, it was $5 per capita, per citizen for the cities. The county, they came up with a formula, which was a three-year look back, was 21, 22, and 23. And they took the numbers they brought in, cut off 25% off that, and then times by $300 an animal. So different methodology for the county as opposed to the cities. And I know Woodland, for example, negotiated down with them to 12,000, and they've signed an agreement for this year. Woodland's roughly 6,000 people, so that'd be $2 per capita. Whereas with Kelso, they're still sticking on 55,000, which Kelso's roughly 12,000 people. So by the Woodland standard, they should only pay 24,000. So, and I'm not sure how they arrived at the number, the 111 for us or the 115 for Longview. It's just their methodology is kind of all over the board.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because it didn't make sense to me based on the numbers that I looked at. Are we actually increasing, taking in that many more animals every year since we, since we started that program?
Well.
And the comparables that you have listed in the email?
In terms of, I guess, how far back are you going? Because we really didn't, it was under contract up till 2023, so we really didn't keep track of that. I'm assuming there was a pretty average number.
Okay.
And at that time, they, they had an open door for both their own in-house animal control and citizens bringing in animals. I would suspect it would stayed pretty consistent, I would, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, because I, when I, and I read some, I read the articles that you had sent in the email, and thank you for that. The impression that I got was that as they're expanding their, their business in Southwest Washington, they're wanting to implement the same model across the board and charge the same rates with no consideration of what our needs actually are based on our per capita and the number of animals that we're taking in. And I, I also wanted to find, I tried to find something that showed us what the administrative costs to that organization are based on the funds that they're receiving and what they're taking in, but I couldn't, I couldn't find that.
If I may, Commissioner Rader, I'm not certain that they are trying to use the same rates in Clark County as, well, in Calis County as they are in Clark County. They recently negotiated a contract with Washougal Camas, a joint contract with them. The combined population of those two cities together is 43,000. The contract that they negotiated with Camas-Washougal for next year is $39,893, rising to $45,360 in 2026. The drop dead amount that they've negotiated with Kelso, which is a city third the size of those two together, was 53,000. And so there is some confusion in their calculus, and so the transparency in that is problematic. Doing our due diligence, we need to be aware of that when negotiating with them. How are they coming up with these numbers and what is the plan going forward?
I would add too, one of the articles with Columbia, and they quoted the director saying they have a, was it a tier one program down there? Which is the top of the line, and looking at the financials, it was in that pie chart. They obviously operate at a much higher level than I think Calis County can afford, looking at those numbers that they operate on. And they get a lot of money just in donations. And they also run a thrift shop to bring, brought in 1.7 million. It's, I just don't think Calis County can afford their program without, you know, an external funding sources. And it's kind of interesting, for 2023, their government contracts in Clark County brought in 1.1 million, which is pretty very close to what our local Humane Society was getting from our government agencies, county and the four cities that participated in that. So their budget is, has a lot more external sources of revenue than our local Humane Society did as well. So we're, if they're going to try to run a program like that, they're going to have to either subsidize it. So I don't believe the Calis County residents, there's the money there to do that.
What do you see for our options as far as, for decision making capabilities? What do you see as far as our options are?
Well, one option would be to operate our own shelter in the county, whether the county did that alone or in conjunction with, say, Longview and Kelso, and do that either operated as a government owned, I guess, multi- as a government-owned, I guess, multi-jurisdiction shelter, or go out for a request for proposal and have a private contractor come in and, and operate it, a bid process. I just talked to Rick earlier, kind of acquainted to, kind of like how the landfill is ran. It's a kind of a, somewhat of a private business enterprise, but at least you own it, but you control some of the costs and you, at least you know where your money's going. Whereas if you contract, like with the Humane Society down there, you really don't get to dictate anything and they tell you how much you're going to pay for. And so at least we'd have local control if we had our own local shelter. And I know Lewis County runs, they have a county-owned shelter up there that they operate.
Sheriff, do we have a sense as far as involving the other municipalities, if we decide to take that on, where they're at and if it's something that they're in favor of?
I know we had discussions early on, like last year when we took over animal control. I know myself and the chiefs of place were of a mind to do that, go forward with that. There's some personnel changes and Longview agreed to take the lead on that, and then they had some changes over there in personnel, so really didn't get any legs underneath the effort. But I suspect based on discussions with them and form, I can't commit for them, but I think they're, share our frustration with the current costs and the potential of higher prices going forward. Now, I can just add one thing what occurred to me, I think it's explained in the email, our budget for this year, I think, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 420,000 that's been budgeted for animal control and sheltering. So the price they're offering, I think we, we can fit that into the current budget more than likely, as long as we don't have some extraordinary cost with, like whether it's veterinary expenses or large-scale like livestock cases, which can run into a lot of money.
How often has the county ever run into the large livestock issue?
Well, this past year, we only had one that we actually had to seize some horses and we had to pay, I think it was about roughly $3,500. It was an out-of-county horse rescue outfit that came in and helped us out and included some veterinary care. So we only had the one this year, there were several others, animal control folks worked with the owners and made other arrangements that didn't involve us taking the animals. I know in one case, it was a large-scale one down in the woodland bottoms, an older gentleman had about 70 sheep and were able to negotiate with him to actually sell his, his flock. And so we didn't have to move in on that. Historically, there was one up in Castle Rock here five, six years ago where the county had to get involved in that. It was, I believe it was about 600 head of cattle up there that were being, not cared for properly. I suspect that costs quite a bit of money to deal with. So there is that potential, but we try to work, work with the owners to arrive at a solution short of taking the animals. But last year, I said there was just the one.
Okay. Well, I was very, I'm very viable to the idea of getting animals returned to their owners with no cost to them as much as possible. And I think that really shines a positive light on the whole process for the county. So that part, I was happy to see the numbers on that.
This has been a pretty whirlwind thing since, since I came in, because it was always done by Humane Society. We signed a contract with Humane Society. Then they sent us a letter and says, we're no longer going to do, we'll shelter the animal, but we're no longer going to do control. You, you need to figure out what you're going to do with control by the end of the year. And so in our case, the sheriff, in the city's case, the police chiefs all kind of got together and hammered out this thing. We really, to be honest, we really didn't know how it was going to work. We're treading into unknown waters and, and personally, I think, when I look around at all the municipalities, I think they've made some good decisions, it's worked well. And, but it almost feels we're a little bit under the gun here. They got, I think we need to explore other options, but I don't know that we have a whole lot of choice to not extend that contract for a year to give us some time to do that.
Did all the municipalities that got together, did they contribute financially to the building of the facilities for the storing of the animals at the jail?
They, they did a little bit. We, we took the lead on that. The jail agreed to give us some space over there. We were the primary, I guess, participant in that, but Longview and Kelso contributed supplies and kennels and I know myself and the chiefs of police at the time, Jordan, some of our other employees, we spent time over there and I spent several weekends actually getting the shed into shape, insulating it, painting it. We put in electrical, a light, a heater and that. In summer, we ran an air conditioner for it. So we, we invested quite a bit, proportionally quite a bit more than the cities, but it was more or less, it was a gentleman's agreement. This is a good thing and it has worked out in that regard.
In anticipation of that question, I was provided that information from Andrew Hamilton. I believe it's around $3,500 that Kelso contributed, and if I'm correct, it was $3,900 from Longview. One issue is that gentleman's agreement, it does need to be reduced to, to riding for, for any number of reasons, but we can address that later. And, and it's in the process of being addressed now, so.
So with regards to, to Chairman Dahl's comment about being under the gun with, with the contract, there, is it a suggestion or requirement to sign that contract with them to get rid of those facilities of the jail?
Well, the, their current offer is it's non-negotiable that that facility close, or temporary holding facility. That's the term they use, non-negotiable. I'll let Mr. Lorene speak to negotiations.
That's a moving target. The, the individual has been tasked by the Humane Society of Southwest Washington, initially stated, we hope that you might be willing to get rid of, we hope that you might be willing to end and halt the jail model. Has inquired with the sheriff whether or not be willing to halt the jail model. And it wasn't until that December 16 conversation with the Kelso City Council that it was being presented that it absolutely is part of the negotiations and it, and it's been agreed that it's going to be halted. Hey, that's only a decision that you can make because you're in charge of facilities.
Why does it, I wonder why it matters to them? If, if we say, okay, your offer is a contract 111, we say, we're willing to pay 111, what do they care what we do with the animals over there? You know what I mean? What's, what's their?
Why is it a stipulation? Yeah, that's what I'm wondering too.
They want the mandated fees for picking them up and people come getting them. That's what I got out of the letter, was they're just trying to get the added revenue from...
They would lose revenue for the...
Per animal. They see that every animal as a revenue source for them to charge the owner to come get them.
So that facility would be, we would be bypassing that fee if we can, if we continued with that program?
That must be what they're looking at, I think Commissioner Farrell's probably.
I think the, the writing is, is between, I, I'm not going to, I think we can surmise what they, they want, want from this. They want, and I think the sheriff is probably better able to, to speak to it, but I, my, my assessment is, is that they want to be the only game in town because it makes it easier to have those contract negotiations later on.
Say that one more time, they want what?
To be the only game in town, which they are significantly, they are a sole source provider. We, there are no other options for this county to consider at this moment. And when you remove the only insignificant but option that we do have, then they are the only option. And that places us in a, in a unfavorable negotiating position.
Yeah, I think that's, I think you're totally spot on. Let me ask a couple hypotheticals, because I've never really gone over and looked at in the space, taking in the animals that have been taken in by all of us, is there enough space if, if you develop that further, that if Callis County in conjunction with the cities did decide to do their own housing, is there room for that there?
Not with the current building, there is land available, be up to, I guess, I have to talk to Moran about that, to add additional sheds and that sort of thing. I guess the, the backside of it is, we keep them in short term and then we take them to Humane Society, they deal with them more long-term. So they're trying to deal with the veterinary care and then the eventual adoption, that could take a little bit longer and that'd be kind of a larger scale program than what we do right now, but.
Yeah, I just don't know if it had the space, if we had to develop it further, if that could, space could work. And then do inmates, do they have the ability to volunteer if they get to a level where you're comfortable with them?
That was my, kind of my original intent with that, reaching out to Moran, but I think just due to, I guess, staffing issues there, they'd have to be supervised, that hasn't really come to fruition, having inmates do that. Though I know some of the jail, jail folks will go out on their breaks and they'll interact with the animals and as well, but that hasn't, that really hasn't come to fruition. I know they did a few years ago, they actually ran a, they had chickens in one of the side yards at the jail as well. It was kind of a, I guess, a trustee program or for some of the prisoners over there that they ceased that, but there has been, I guess, history of doing something like that over there. And just to, just to maybe follow through on your, about expanding that over there, take more personnel obviously to, yes, the daily care for, for the animals and then eventually doing, jumping through the hoops on adoption and that sort of thing. And I know there's certainly liability issues, I imagine, to go along with adopting out animals. And I don't know if Mr. Lorene knows any, is into that area of law or not, but I risk might have some comment on, on somehow screening the animals that go out to the public.
When I went to law school, I did not go to law school to determine...
You didn't have a canine court?
Canine court, but it seems like that's my lot in life. I did do some investigation. I think the bigger legal issue jeopardy for us would be fostering more than adopting. Adopting, it's year-ending a relationship, whereas fostering, you do, there is the potential for failure to disclose enough information associated with any animal. And so there, there's potential liability there. You know, there's always going to be liability with these animals for just housing them. What if they escape? What if one of them escapes and that, and they happen to have been, you know, declared dangerous and, and it then goes and bites someone while it's under our watch? You're going, those are things that need to be fleshed out, but there's certainly potential concerns with it. You know, what, what we're talking about is a publicly funded, a potential publicly funded shelter, which is contemplated. There's, what we're dealing with is a 501(c)(3), which is also contemplated. Both provide reasonable services, it's just what is it that is best for the county? And that's for the board to determine.
Are we up against a deadline or what is the deadline for us to make a decision?
Well, we agreed to an extension through the end of January under the current terms from 2024. So the board approved that, I think in December, we brought that forward. So really, the next deadline is January 31st of this year, unless we seek an extension. While we're still negotiating.
What other options do we have as far as, do we have time to go out and look for somebody else that could do this rather than Southwest Washington? Yeah.
My understanding, going back to Lewis County, they, they do run a publicly funded shelter, it's really small, and they're currently looking for an independent or private contractor to take it over. It, I'm unaware whether it's happened yet. They have one established and they're having trouble finding someone to do that. So right now, I don't think within the next two, two and a half weeks, you're going to be able to find someone that's going to be willing to come in here and provide the services that we're currently negotiating for. So you have to consider that and, and then with that in mind, start taking your next steps for the future.
So moving forward, if we sign this contract for the year, as Chairman Dahl stated, and as you stated, counsel, that we can start moving forward and looking elsewhere with those facilities and the gentleman's agreement that we have on the monies that were put forth towards those, if it's non-negotiable that that facility be removed and we decide that we want to fund it and run it, we're going to end up putting those back in because it sounds like it was a pretty successful program, the way that it was set up in the past, we would just have to go back and reinstate that and put it back in, build them back up?
Yeah, no decision has been made. I mean, if we even stop using it, it could stay there, I think, as is and...
So we don't have to take it down, we just have to stop using it for the purposes that we're using it for?
Based on, I guess, their term non-negotiable in terms of use of it, that they certainly can't dictate, remove into that, as Mr. Lorene said, I think that's the purview of the board to decide on facilities and how they're used, but I think there's no reason for them to actually go away.
Okay. And, and that can be a hill you want to die on, I mean, keeping that in, in play. So it's, you know, it's all process of your negotiations because it is your facility.
I'm wondering if, as you, if we could kind of work with Lewis County, I wonder if, if their search for a per, for a, an entity to run these would be more popular if they had Lewis and, and Callis to run, you know what I, I wonder if they're, if somebody'd be more willing to step up if they felt they had two counties? I don't know.
Creating a multi-jurisdictional, you know, that would be something for, to consider and, and there's certainly investigation that needs to be, needs to take place, inquiries with other municipalities across the state to see how they may run there.
How they make it work.
Because it's not every...
I think we have more in common in how we'd work, want to work with animals with Lewis than we probably do with Clark.
I, I would, I don't have an answer to that, but...
I'm just making a guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we, if we extend it, it's going to be on new terms, it's not going to be on the old 2024 terms, if we extend it one month? I don't, I don't see a benefit to extending it one month, but that's what it would be?
More than likely, they agreed to this one-month extension under the 2024 terms, which is $300 in animals, that's what we're under right now. But if we were to try to extend that, I, I'm not sure how that would go.
Yeah.
I think you've mentioned that the, what they're asking for is that's very likely will fit under our current budget unless you get some, a huge number of animals or something, something out of the ordinary happens.
I believe so, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. Based on last year, what we did, they noted in there, we had quite a bit of savings, I think we came in at about 356,000 out of a $416,000 budget, it was about a $60,000, I guess, less than it was budgeted, so.
So budget-wise, what we've already done and approved, we're probably in good shape for it. And it, it does give us time to maybe explore some other options. I'm not a fan of losing that, the ability to turn those animals over out there because it's, it's worked pretty well. And I agree with Commissioner Farrell, that they don't want that to happen because they want dollars out of those animals, but, but I don't know what other thing I could see that we could do. I think we're kind of, that's kind of the path, it looks like to me, unless you have some other ideas.
Do we have the option of building a hybrid contract with them that they would agree to, that no, on the short-term basis, we're going to continue doing what we're doing and they're going to deal with the long-term and the large livestock issue? and the large livestock issue? And build a model off of that.
Yeah, yeah, as far as, did you mention livestock or livestock, yes, as a part of the discussion, if that was the case. But in terms of, we could go back to them and ask that, but they've been pretty insistent that they, as you mentioned, being a sole source for all the animals. We could try that. It has been successful and we could try. But this latest offer of 111,000, they said that was probably the best they could do. So 110, I guess it's 110 is what they came back with.
And Sheriff, that, that concession wasn't made with the agreement of a longer contract than one year, right? I mean, it's one year and that's what it is. We don't have to say it's two years or three years to get that concession?
Correct. That's 20, just 2025. Yep.
And, and Commissioner Rader, that's why I extended that, that article from September 5th from the Colombian to you, to the board is so that you're aware of what they anticipate are going to be the graduated increases over the next years. And I, I think the writing is on the wall there. It is going to increase from 70 to what they said 90% and then.
Yeah, that's my.
If we could get a three-year contract with cost of living increases, I'd, I'd buy that.
Right.
Because I think they're going to ask for way, way, way more than that.
Yeah, historically.
2026.
I would say from what that article stated, historically, they're not gradual. That's a, excuse me, that's a steep incline. Yeah.
Well, what, what do you think? I kind of like that. If you're not opposed to it, maybe make, we still got a couple of weeks, make one more ask, see if, see if perchance they move on that. And if not, we're, we're kind of know where we're at, right?
Just tell them we're not in favor of doing away with the current model. And, and we want an offer that takes into account the current model.
Okay, we, we can try that and, and see. So see what they come back with.
Okay.
Feel good with that? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Now we're headed into, and I assume you're going to lead this one?
No, actually. I want to take a backseat to Mr. Spencer.
Young man taking on.
Afternoon Commissioners. Chief Spencer with County Sheriff's Office. I assume you got the documents that I'm kind of referring to. I have paper copies if you needed it. But this is a conversation based on the county code that was recently adopted for dangerous animals and how to handle dangerous, dangerous animals within the county. And so I just tried to provide an overview of that code and specifically the obligation to create a board of community members to serve on a, on this dangerous animal review board. Uh, the idea would be for us to find five individuals within the county, at least three representing each of your three districts, just to get a wide variety of individuals to serve on this, on this board. Make decisions based on, you know, when they would meet monthly or, or whatever that, that may look like. You know, preventing county employees from being on it, that type of thing. So it kind of spells out some information, some history behind it. And kind of talks a little bit about the process and what it looks like. Lewis County, recently their sheriff's office took this over. Previously, it was their health services board that handled these types of situations, but just recently the Lewis County Sheriff's Office has started this process over the last eight months or so. And so I've got some good contacts up there on, on how successful it is for them up there in, in, in doing so.
And just, just to provide a, a little history, our old code was outdated and we really didn't have any teeth in that when it came, came to that. So we looked at what some other counties have done to, to put some teeth back in or give it a little bit of, you know, and that's where we came up with, with this, this process.
Correct, Commissioner Dahl. I think that's, that's a portion of it, yes. Also, it, it brought us within, it, it addressed some of the concerns that we had for liability and, and potential litigation going with the seizure of animals and how we address animals. And in this.
Because some counties had faced some lawsuits on the way they handled the animals because they didn't have a.
Correct. A lack of due process involved with addressing the dangerous animals or potentially dangerous animals by enacting 6.13. The board brought us into a more modern approach to this rather than addressing things through litigation and signing checks.
And just kind of moving through, this is, these meetings would have to be recorded. That's why we kind of recommend them being held here. There does need to be a clerk present and that was kind of another recommendation for the board to provide a clerk, which, who understands the audio video in here where the meetings could be held. Because that's all part of that, the code that spelled out in 613. Just, I guess, kind of how that would look or how we envision that looking, obviously there's a, a, a call for service or animal control response to a, a call where a, you know, animal may have bitten or meets the definition spelled out in, in 6.12 of being dangerous or potentially dangerous animal. And they would give documentation, a declaration to the animal owner pending review of the board that this animal would be dangerous or potentially dangerous, found potentially dangerous. That animal owner would then have the right to, and I spelled out the three different options on that, on the slides up there. They can either admit to the findings without any hearing and then go through the process of keeping and maintaining their dangerous or potentially dangerous animal, meeting the stipulations of the code. Or they have the option to request a hearing within 10 days. They can request a hearing. And then that's when that board would be notified and meet. And it would be quasi judicial where the animal owner could speak on their behalf or call witnesses to the event and present information to the board to help the board make a determination of whether or not the dog is, or excuse me, animal is dangerous or potentially dangerous.
I, I don't have that code in front of me. So how do we, I mean, and I've probably asked this before and I don't re- remember it, but how do we designate? Is it just if an animal attacks humans, if it attacks other animals? If a child comes up and grabs its ear real quick and it turns around, nips, is that dangerous? You know what I mean?
There are definitions within the code and depending.
Pretty clear and concise.
A nip would, could potentially be a potential dangerous, a dangerous dog is one that causes more damage to a, an individual than, than a nip. We're talking being grabbed or something like that.
You can penalize an animal if it feels like it's defending itself, but if it's, if it's predatory.
There, there are defenses for these particular allegations as well. So if indeed, you know, a person is on property that they shouldn't be on and the animal nips them or bites them, then you know, trespass or beware. There, there's, there are defenses there to prevent a designation applying to an, an animal in certain circumstances.
Yeah, I, we see so many neighbor things. I don't want a neighbor coming in and say, well, my neighbor here's dog nipped my child. Well, he didn't tell us the, the child come up and tugged on its ears and did these type of things. You know what I mean? I don't want to get somebody in trouble.
Yeah, and I think a lot of.
Just nonsense.
A lot of that is going to be determined by the animal control officer, the response to the call. So they would have to make the determination, only if there's probable cause to suggest that this dog is dangerous or potentially. But like Mr. Lorraine said, that that's a stipulation that where if the dog is, thinks it's defending itself or defending its family or property. We would still have to find probable cause to determine if that dog was dangerous or not.
Yeah. Because I know some people think considered dangerous if they just don't stay on their own property. I mean, I've had them in my office with those conversations.
That, if a dog is at large, there are, there are other sections to the code, which would be under 612, not under 613 that would apply. And, but in this instance, we're, we're merely talking about allegations and determining whether or not those allegations have been founded.
I just, and I, and I think it is. I think you guys have worked hard on it. I just, if I'm going to get to the point where I'm telling somebody, you have to do special stuff with your animal because it's dangerous, I want to make sure that it's, I don't want to hurt people that are.
Well, I'll give you a, a quick example of a real life story that my oldest son, right after high school, friend of his, the, the family was moving out of the area and they had a, a black lab that was, that basically labs get to be a little bit possessive as they get older, very oriented to their family. But they couldn't take the dog with them. So my son agreed to bring the dog to our house and find somebody to take, take care of the dog because we already had a black lab. My youngest son was still in high school and the, the dog was laying, sleeping on the floor at the feet of my oldest son. The youngest boy, he just got out of the shower and he came and laid down on the floor and he reached up to pet the dog. And then the dog was asleep. It surprised him. And the dog snapped its head around and his teeth, his tooth got inside of his lower eyelid. And thankfully it didn't get his eyeball, but it, it tore his lower eyelid fairly severely. And we ended up in the, first in the hospital and then at the eye doctor that very night. Ultimately, he had to go to OHSU and have surgery done because they, they consider the lower tear duct to be the primary tear duct. So it had to be repaired. And I never felt for one minute that the dog did anything wrong. It just got surprised. So I'd hate to see that, something like that where an animal all of a sudden got labeled as a dangerous animal. Like you talked about, it could have been a whole lot more serious. He could have lost an eyeball over it. And thank God it wasn't, but those things do happen.
I agree. And, and the code itself contemplates situations and circumstances like that.
Every chihuahua I've ever met bites my ankles.
Yeah.
No, yeah, no kidding. Or your, your thigh if it can jump up that high.
And that's, that's why, in addition, why we have written this code and why we won't, need to get the board in place to hear these instances to where explanations can be given to the board so that the board, citizens who understand situations or, or may not, or just are, are able to hear it and make decisions based on all the facts, not just the facts that are determining probable cause. Does that make sense?
Well, hopefully the board would be a backup, right? You're not, you're not, the, the animal control officer, whoever isn't going to run out and just write a dangerous animal citation just because the board can solve the problem.
So in this situation, you would, if there, if animal control is called to respond, I, I doubt in your situation, anyone was called.
No.
So, but in a situation where animal control is called, they may issue a, a citation saying your, your, it is alleged that your animal has been, is potentially dangerous or dangerous. You have such and such time to respond. You can, you can either agree or deny or suggest mitigating circumstances. And if they deny wholly, it would go before the dangerous dog review board or whatever we determine it's going to be called. And at, at that point, they would present their, their case. The animal control officer would present the facts as they saw it, the evidence that they have. The owner of, of any animal that has been alleged to have been dangerous or potentially dangerous would also present their facts and evidence that they may have. And then it's up to the, to three of the five individuals who are on the board to make a determination based on the county code. That's how it would work. So it's, it, as, as Chief Spencer stated, it is a quasi judicial board. It can be appealed.
How often do you anticipate this board having to meet?
I know Lewis County schedules theirs monthly, if there's a reason, if there's a reason to meet. So they have a, a designated spot on the calendar to meet once a month.
So if an animal, an owner's animal has been cited as a dangerous animal and the next meeting isn't for three weeks, does the animal stay with the owner? Or does it get put in quarantine somewhere or what happens then?
A lot of that would be dependent on the circumstances. There would be potential for either. They could stay with the animal owner. I mean, given the situation, if somebody came onto their property type of thing versus the animal got loose and chased down a, you know, a bus full of kids or some, I mean, I guess circumstances would dictate, but whether or not we would seize the animal.
When they're in for the other, I ask a similar question like that. And I, I think one of the things they'd look at is there some things they can put in place for the animal owner until some restrictions, as long as they followed that, they'd keep the animal till that, that happened. If they, if they didn't follow it and the animal went out and repeated, then they would take them.
Okay.
Is the, this board being created and these three options, is that the due process that was missing from before?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior, there was, it was more officer focused. And because of that, we gave an inordinate amount of power to a single individual who was police
minded, yeah.
Rather than to an individual who is judicial. And that presented a number of problems for other counties and we opted to learn from other people's mistakes than make our own.
Good.
Yeah, I know, it's essentially we kind of spelled out what we're, what we're talking about. I also provided you with a few examples of what Lewis County did when they looked for applications for people to sit on this board, some of the information. Had a request for qualifications, put out some news articles, that type of thing. So just, those were just examples for you guys to see kind of how they, they went through their process.
Is there a, now, now that this has been passed, is there a timeline that we're looking at that this board has to be in place?
Sooner than later?
I think that's a good timeline.
Yeah.
Once we can have a request for qualifications put out for the public, a call for applications and ultimately see who applies.
All right. And this is the copy we got. You're, you're showing us what Lewis County uses.
What there's, yeah, there.
Oh, okay.
Correct. That was just a template to plagiarize if we needed to.
So yeah, once, once that has been done, then, and then a board and the board establishes a board, approves the board members, then bylaws would need to be written or established. The board would adopt those. And, and at that point, then we can get moving forward. Obviously, everything takes time. But as Chief. But as Chief Spencer stated, the sooner the better. For now, the sheriff will be acting as the quasi judicial officer. Um, but it would be preferable to have three individuals sitting and hearing the facts rather than. The, the sheriff hearing those facts.
So, let's assume that a, a citation was written to a animal owner. That his dog has bit somebody and they're going to come before the board, uh, and the dog bit the neighbor's kid. Uh, does the neighbor's kid's parents get notice of this hearing that they can attend it also, or is it just the animal owner?
Yeah, the, the victim or victims involved in the, a case would be notified as well. So, uh, a, a complete package will be put together for the board members, for the uh. Animal owner and the victim or victims uh in the case.
All parties involved.
Yes.
Okay.
So just a, a point of information for myself, currently the sheriff would be the quasi judicial officer in that situation. You said that somebody could appeal that, the, the decision of the board or whoever. What, what does that process look like? Do they just go to the courts and say, hey, I want to appeal this decision?
Um, upon a finding, a written finding being delivered, then um they would have, I think it tend to. Ten days to appeal the decision. The decision then could potentially go in front of a hearings examiner. Where they would only review the record itself to determine whether or not um the appropriate decision was made. If that um is then unpalatable to the owner of the animal. They could appeal it up to um superior court under uh a Rouse type appeal. And from there, then it would go to a court of appeals if it's still sticking within someone's craw. That they, they did not receive property process and probably that would be the only appealable issue would be the due process that's provided.
I had a couple of questions on a, a couple of your other slides. Declaration option one is that.
That would, that would be, they, they don't want to request a hearing, they admit to what happened.
Yeah.
They would just start to go through the stipulations of the maintaining ownership of the dangerous animal.
It, it would, it would be fitted with a microchip. They could, they'd say, okay, we'll fit it with a microchip, or they could. Put the collar on there. Is there any potential for obedience training or, or, or certificate or something? To show that you've been able to adjust the animal or. I don't even know if others do that, but.
Yeah, there's nothing specific in the code for that, but there is, if they did request a hearing in front of the board. Uh, they agreed to what happened, but they requested maybe a, a reduction in penalties or, or things like that. That potentially I would think could be something that the board could.
Caesar Blon, he does. You know what I mean? I, they're just animals and they can be, how you treat them is how you can.
There's also a process for, for an animal owner whose animal has previously been designated dangerous or potentially dangerous. To uh, uh, come before the board and request that that designation be dropped based on.
So, so this board would have the ability, if they could prove the obedience training, could see actions or whatever. They could, they could actually have the ability to drop the da- dangerous designation and curb some of this? Or not?
Typically, it's in. Yes, the animal is aging out essentially.
Yeah.
Too old, too few teeth, sort of um health issues. That might contribute to its inability to really be of a danger to the community. Um, and again, when you, when we're talking a dangerous dog designation, we're talking about some truly egregious behavior.
And as long as we're, we're stuck on truly egregious behavior, I just don't want it to.
Yeah, no. I, I, and we, we understand the situation. And again, each and every one of these are, are case specific. We've learned in the last year even more, maybe the, the approach for animal control is very much towards the education side. And we understand the importance of uh the community members owning, you know, their animals and having their rights as an animal owner. Uh, so it's, yeah, the design is not to be, it's not intent, intended to be heavy handed. Uh, it's just the due process, a way to handle uh this type of situation, should it arise.
And everything I've seen and heard, I think, I think your people do a good job. And I'm not saying they don't, I just. Some point in time, you may have somebody there that isn't doing a good job, and I don't want a homeowner to be hurt by that for. The other question I had is I didn't understand this certificate of compliance. If we've designated the animal, why do we need to know about it every year? It just, I, um. Probably sounded a little tin hatish, but once you put these in place and we start developing this revenue. Somebody will come along and say, well, all animals, this makes sense for all animals. We should collect this fee from everybody.
Yeah.
So I, I worry about that. I worry about creep because I've been around a while and I've seen creep. And so I'm just kind of sitting on the side of the consumer here going, I'm not sure if we know it's dangerous. Why do we need a certificate saying, yeah, it's still dangerous? We're not, we're not going to take that designation off.
It's not a certificate that, yeah, it's still dangerous. It's, yes, we're in compliance with what is required. To maintain that dangerous animal at our home.
But we'll know that, right? If they're out of compliance, because it's probably going to get picked up or something's going to happen, we're going to say, hey, this. Dog was designated dangerous and these people aren't doing what they're supposed to.
Second offense and take the animal away or something.
That is what happens. Uh, second offense, an animal will be euthanized.
Okay.
Um, and but again, that's egregious behavior.
Yeah.
That, that leads up to that second offense. It's, I, I think it's. If we were to travel into a world that I used to uh work within, um. Individuals that I prosecuted all had to be registered. And there's a reason to register them is to notify the community so that the community can remain safe. And when we have animals that have caused significant damage to an individual. Um, when we're talking about this, we're talking about someone who may have had to undergo skin grafts. Or, or like your son, but in a different situation where they had to have surgery, where we're talking substantial bodily harm. Um, you know, and an, most animals aren't going to just naturally go and do that. There is something about inherent with that singular animal that, that the community needs to be aware of. And an individual who owns that animal needs to take responsibility for that animal's behavior. And that's the reason for that certificate of compliance. Yes, we have the specific um housing. That is necessary to ensure that the animal doesn't get loose. Yes, we have it chipped. Yes, we have a collar in it. Yes, we're still. Um, still complying with that. We may have moved and so we need to have new housing. And, and, and advise people there as well. That we've adopted the same precautions in the new home that we had in our prior residence. Those are the, that's the reason for that certificate and the ongoing requirement for that certificate. What we're really talking about is maybe one to ten people a year having to establish that certification. And I think the sheriff can, I think Chief Spencer can speak to the number of, the number of animals that are actually designated in this county. As dangerous.
Yeah, and, and I'm not disagreeing you, with you that you're probably talking about a small number of animals. But I'm telling you, I'm not in favor of this because I know it'll creep into all animals and I don't know who's going to enforce it. Are you going to send out a deputy, if somebody doesn't, misses their yearly certificate, are you going to go? We're going to spend police time tracking them down? I mean, I just, I, 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 I struggle with this because I just, I. In my mind, it'll just grow and it'll encompass uh a lot more. I don't even see, I don't see the need for it. I, I don't anyways.
Will this.
Go ahead.
Will this writ, this uh certification, this annual certification, will it create like a register? So that citizens can see who has these types of animals in the county? Or is that, you know?
It would show up in our, our records system, uh, that this individual had, just like a. Like a CPL would show up, yeah, on, on someone's record or their, you know, if they have a certain amount of property, property that was registered. Or logged into our system, then it would show up like that. John Doe is the owner of a potentially dangerous dog.
So it's, it's, it would be more for the enforcement side's informational. Uh, capacity than it would be for the public?
Yeah, we haven't discussed a, a, a public registry of uh county owned dangerous animals. Uh, like there would be for, I guess, uh, registered sex offenders.
So, as another example or another question, I guess, I've had the. Owner, I guess, I don't know what to call it. Uh. My oldest boy's dog got stolen and never, it's never, all the time we had it, wonderful black lab. Uh, never bit anybody before or after the incident I'm going to describe to you. But the dog got stolen by some uh, basically professional thieves that were stealing hunting dogs here. And they were transporting them to Texas. And uh fortunately, my son had, before he went in the service, had trained the dog. So it would not eat from anybody. I could put a bowl of food, I could put fresh steak down in front of that dog, it would not touch it. Uh, until my son came over and he had to train the dog to let me feed it. So anyway, the dog was in the backyard, these two gentlemen stole the dog. And uh, the dog was put in the back of a pickup, uh, and left there. And they were throwing drugged food in the back of the truck, thinking the dog had eaten the food. The guy reached in the back of the truck to grab a snare, which is what they use to pick the dog up by the neck and put him in the back of a truck. Uh, the dog reached in the back of the truck and, or the dog, the gentleman reached in the back of the truck, passed the dog who was laying at the tailgate. And the dog got a hold of him by the arm and as he was trying to get his arm back, ripped his arm apart, lost two fingers in the process. Uh, and uh, they did catch these two gentlemen who ended up uh going back to the country they came from. But uh, i- in this case, the dog bit somebody, did severe damage. Uh, and got loose and then ultimately my son got his dog back. But had the dog been labeled a dangerous animal. In this, in this state, a stolen animal, the responsibility of the animal goes to the person who stole it. Correct? I know that because I've lived through this. If you steal my dog, you stole responsibility for it. It went with the animal to you because you stole the dog. So, uh. Now I get the dog back after it bit somebody. And if it got labeled as a dangerous animal, does that responsibility for that go away? Cause I got the dog back, even though it did serious damage to somebody?
Well, I hesitate to get too far in the weeds on this Commissioner Farrell. Um, but I will say in that situation, it would be explainable, given the fact that the animal was stolen. It was probably protecting itself from strangers. Um, and so there are situations like that that are defendable. And so it's not likely that the animal would be determined dangerous. It's likely that the animal was either defending itself or, or its master. Based on those circumstances. Um, so, um, I don't. So just, to translate that situation to what we're, what we're attempting to do is just develop a board. To hear situations where there is the potential that an animal could be. Determined potentially dangerous or dangerous. It, I find it, 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 it places me in a difficult situation. I, I remember when I was in, when I was um trying cases, I would have potential jurors always asking questions about their cases. And so I can't answer those questions. Um, and, and I think I'm going to find myself in that situation. I hate to do that to you, Commissioner Farrell, because we're just meeting each other today. Um, because I do want to be able to answer your questions. I think in this situation, I, I don't have enough information to really answer it. But I do have enough information to say that a situation like that to assuage all your concerns. Would likely not find, that animal would likely not be found dangerous.
Okay. And I can add to that, that if we get called to that type of situation and the uh suspect in the theft. Says they stole a dog and the dog bit him and liked him to be declared dangerous, uh, we wouldn't spend a whole lot more time in that. Uh, situation.
Okay.
Well, I think these, these examples show all the more reason to have a board to go through and, and work through these issues.
I'm good with everything but the certificate of compliance I struggle with. So you, I, my colleagues can do whatever they want. But I, I, I would, I'm balking at that one, the yearly thing. It just seems to me it'll, I think there's potential it creeps into other owners. I just.
I have to say, I agree.
It looks like an enforcement nightmare anyway. Uh, how's the sheriff going to go out and know that you got insurance and your dog's been vaccinated and all that kind of stuff? I just.
I have to say, I agree, Chairman, particularly because this is something that's going to stay within the enforcement agency. It's not going to be made known to the public. I, I have to say, I agree.
I don't know if you have any suggestions to make that better?
If we, if we make this board happen. Is that something they could do away with? Or once we adopt it, is there?
Well, this is currently adopted, correct? We just don't have a board to enforce it.
The code is, code was adopted. You can always rewrite the code, but the code itself is, it's, it's pretty standard. Across the state to have a certification for dangerousness. Um, and I believe it's based on RCW, so.
So it spoke more forcefully the last time, huh? Yeah, it's okay, you can say, yeah.
I, I, I think, Mr. Dole, to be politic here, um, the concerns probably would have, we could have gone back to the drawing board. Had, had you had more concerns or, or the answer would have been, well, it's based on RCW. So, um, I think what, what Chief Spencer states is, is important for the board to know. It, it, it assists them in determining whether they've had interaction with that animal in the past. For an additional question that Commissioner Farrell asked, um, or is, or just information provided. That if they're. Investigated a second time, there, you need to know that they're investigated for a second time. Because there are greater and steeper um penalties to a second finding of dangerousness. A second finding of dangerousness results in an automatic euthanasia of the animal. Um, and so having that registry within law enforcement assists them. In knowing what level. In knowing what level, what severity of, of. Uh, violation they're dealing with. Um, there are also steeper penalties. For a, an owner in that situation as well. And so it assists in. In. The investigation portion. Say for instance, you've. They, um, stop an individual who hasn't, who has, is driving with, out of a license. They may stop him once or twice, but after a time that they've been stopped for driving without a license. Then it becomes a driving without a license in second degree. And then it becomes a driving without a license in the first degree. And, and, and having that record of where they're at assists. In determining the severity of the crime and, and what type of penalties that can be applied to that. To that individual driver or that individual animal. Um, and so it's an important aspect of it. I'd, I'd need. I would like for you, Commissioner Doll, to define creep for me so that I could better answer. Or, or, or speak to your concerns.
Real, real simple. And, and a little bit in my defense, we didn't really see this. When you came in with this six thirteen, we didn't have it beforehand. And so I'll, I'll, I'll promise I'll be more diligent about that next time than I want ahead of time to look. Creep is basically saying, okay, this, this makes sense for dangerous dogs. I think this makes sense to have insurance and stuff on. Just regular, when you get your dog license, they should have all this stuff. And all of a sudden, you're, you're, you're creating this big fee income charging these people and, and I've seen it happen over and over. Once the door is. Like this, they just keep, maybe not this group, but there'll be a group that. Keep saying, we see some fee income out of this and they keep slamming it open. And I get tired of the public always have to eat that stuff.
What about the cats? We gotta get the cats licensed.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the dangerous geese, for the dangerous cows.
I, I see where you're going with that, um.
I know that sounds silly, but I've seen it happen.
No, and, and I think. Perhaps to satisfy you, uh, and, and your fellow members is that. There's one body that can determine whether or not it creeps. And it's the board. You can adopt or, or remove.
I totally agree. I would tell you, we'll do that with this board, but I don't know the board ten years down the road.
Right. And, and so there is a purpose and the, the other check on that is my office.
Well, it's already, it, it's already in, it's in ordinance now, so. Not a whole lot I can do with it, but just so you know, I have concerns with it. But there are other stuff you've laid out. I, I think the board's a good idea. I think it gives. The owner at least to say. It's not a unilateral decision by, by an officer or something.
I don't recall. What was the, the, the term for the board members? Did it specify that?
Four years.
Was it four?
Yeah, I believe it was four years. There. And it may be a good idea to potentially stagger that a little bit so you don't. Every four years bring in.
A new.
Five new people that have, you know, so they're, I mean, they, I'm sure they can re-up her, you know, if they wanted to, so. But I know that, uh, Lewis County just went.
So the first appointment should be maybe a couple at two and, you know, yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
So I think that the first thing is. The board should consider, um, how they want to apportion members of, of. The makeup of the board. Um, I know that Chief Spencer suggested. A member from each of your specific districts, which would spread the wealth. Um, but then potentially, you know, you might want to consider individuals from. The relevant community who work within, work with or within, um, some.
Animal control background.
Yeah, or, or just a veterinarian or, or someone who is. The animal husbandry or, or someone who is a, a farmer, I think, you know, they have individuals similar in backgrounds.
Yeah. You, you, yeah, you don't want a zealot neighbor that just doesn't like animals. It's gonna throw everybody away, right? Yeah, yeah. Well, they're all public meetings, Jennifer, so you're, you're okay. Yeah, just make sure it's on. Yeah, well.
So, um. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and, and, um, most of you know that, um, I do work for WSU Extension. I'm not representing WSU Extension in my comments or the four H program. I'm really represent, I'm really want, based on my background in animal science. You know, when you said animal husbandry, um, a couple of thoughts in looking at if you move forward to establish. You know, this, this board is. You know, you're gonna have different instances of what, what, um, people feel is a dangerous animal. You know, and I appreciate the comments that there is no target on certain breeds, you know? Um, um, but I think, uh, the, the piece I think is really important is. What one person may feel is a dangerous animal, another person's not. And I think. If you choose to put together a board is making sure that. That the board members have some training on animal behavior. Because we, I, what I heard is, you know, animals react in different ways. And so some training on animal behavior, there's quite a bit of information out there about, you know, what. What makes a dog aggressive versus not, or what makes, um, even cattle. I mean, there's so. Animals, I mean, I think you guys really, you know that, the circumstances. I think the other piece is that. And I appreciate it is, is an opportunity for due process, that whoever is, the people that. Are appointed to this board get some training from, from legal as far as what is due process? And the ability to, um, for the, the, if you choose to have this five-member board is. The, the ability to listen to facts because, um. Animal owners have a lot of emotions. And so the ability for those members of the board to listen to the facts. And, and that understanding of really of animal behavior. And I think the other thing is. And it is that. That there needs to be an opportunity for, for the animal owner to be held accountable. And, um, you know, and, and I'm, I'm, the animal control officers, they're gonna see more of what's happening on the street than I am. You know, I have my own opinion about. Animal behavior, you know, and my background isn't horses. Anybody can say a horse is dangerous. Yes, absolutely they are. Anybody can say a dog's dangerous, absolutely, if they're. If they're approached wrong. I mean, you had some great, great examples. I'm not sure if cats are dangerous, but anyway. But I think it's that piece of, the owners need to have some, some accountability. And Commissioner Doll, when you talked about, you know, for dogs, for example, obedience, well, in, in the dog world is there's. Um, again, I'm, I know enough to be dangerous because we have four H dogs. Not me, but there is a canine good citizen. Where, um, is I think it's administered through AKC is you can, your dog goes through. A series of obedience and they get that certificate of a canine good citizen. So those, there's some opportunities for, I think. For training for, for the animal owner, if that makes sense. So. Um, and I think the other piece is that, you know, comment about four years is. You might have a hard time getting people to commit to four years. It may be, maybe two years or three years, you know, building some time to get trained, but I think it might have a hard time finding people for four years just to. Comment. So I appreciate the time.
Yeah.
And I do have a degree in animal, so not, I can handle dogs and horses and cattle and the cats, they just take care of themselves.
To her point about the training, you did, you did mention and say that it, within the code, it is clearly defined what a dangerous animal is.
That's correct. In order, in order to prescribe any sort of penalty to anything. It, in order to, the initial portion of due process is to adequately. Define exactly the prohibited behavior without an ability for an individual to say. That shouldn't happen. Um, you've, you violated due process. So, um, the code itself is very clear with the definitions and the. And the prohibited behaviors.
I like the part about, uh, some training for the board members. I think that's important. Well, when I think about. Obedience training a dog, just think about our, our police dogs. You can take them around people and they, they act appropriately. It's only when you tell them not to act appropriately that they do. Although when you had to do one and it was I and R and pretty hard.
Even service dogs that have been through the training and stuff, they're the same way.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, and the ones that they, you know, for blind people that walk around, I mean, they are very, uh, controlled. They're, they're non-aggressive. They're, they have a fixed goal that they've learned and that they perform to. And they're not aggressive unless they have to be, absolutely have to be. So, yeah.
So gentlemen, what are you asking for us today to say okay on, on the board and move forward with that? Is that what we're looking at today?
Yeah, I think that's the, the next step is to start, uh, trying to find some, some individuals that would like to sit on the board. Uh, and, and to that end, we, I think the board needs to determine what the complexion of the board. Should be, um, the type of individuals you want and where you want to draw them from.
That was gonna be my next question. So we would initiate this by voting on it and saying, yes, let's move forward. Do you guys, is it the Sheriff's Department that goes out, puts the application out, puts, tells people to come and do it, or do we do that?
I think that would probably go through Ms. Grayson and Ms. Grayson would, uh, put out the, the RFQ.
Okay.
You okay working down that road?
Yeah.
I, I think, uh, we should take a look at your suggestion, maybe not four years at a time, but maybe start at. Two or stagger some out.
Um, I kinda would be in favor of maybe if you're gonna go out for applications. Ask in the applications for like maybe one, two and three-year terms and see how many applications you get for each category.
Yeah, there you go.
And it'll tell you how long people are willing to serve. Just a thought.
Are you okay with the makeup of one from each district and then two from the?
Yeah.
If you want to call it the husbandry field or however, however you think about that.
Absolutely. Uh, some people with some level of, uh. Animal behavior awareness, whatever you want to call it.
Jennifer, do you have a list of training resources? Cause I, I think that was probably a good suggestion. You're, you're right. People with animals are very emotional and they have to be able to.
Yes, I could probably, I could probably find resources. You know, of course, the first thing that comes to mind is Dr. Temple Grandin. Because she's nationally known for, on her animal behavior. Whether it's, um, you know, if we get Dr. Grandin to come and do training, you can make some money because we can open up to everybody else in charge of it. But I'm being a little facetious, but yes, I could, I could probably find resources, um, within. Um, actually with, within WSU. Because there's more and more focus in the animal science world of animal behavior. And so, you know, I'd be willing to, to do that if you give me directions, so.
Ex-employees from the Humane Society?
There you go.
So if you, again, just, just let me know as how I can help, okay?
Okay, I was just asking. Cause we use kind of one application for everything if it's gonna create a problem, but basically. What Kelly was explaining that when you pick the committee, then the questions kinda, kinda reflect that committee. And we could be able to do the same with this. Yeah, that, that's why I was asking about that. Okay, I think in answer to your question, we're gonna move ahead and, and work on this committee. I, I like some of the, the suggestions. I think. Uh, I think we're good on the one from each district and two within the, in the field. And I like the training requirement. We might put some of that in, or maybe there's a question, what training have you had or? Would you be willing to go through training, those type of things? Is that what you're looking for today?
That is what we're looking for.
Okay.
Score.
On, on the other, we've asked, uh, the sheriff or. Uh, attorney to go back and ask one more time or see if we could get a change on that. I'm not sure we need to bring them back for a workshop if they just communicate like through Kelly with us on what they found with that. Are you two good with that?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming that will work for you.
You referring to? Are you referring to, to me or to Chief Spencer?
Yeah, we've asked you, you go back and ask and see if you could get any budge on, on, on the contract to keep. The units over there. And I'm just saying, we don't need to bring you back in a workshop to answer that to us, just.
Okay, um, yeah, I was just, I was not following the antecedent, so we're, we're, we're actually speaking about the humane society again. Um, yeah, I imagine that, uh, the sheriff will, will take care of that.
And then. If it gets no movement, it's probably pretty cut and dried where we're going, but, but at least we made the ask.
Yeah, um. Yeah, why don't you?
Just to clarify, I, I can go back and ask, but if not, I guess our, our fallback would be the one-year agreement and.
I think that's where, yeah, I don't think we have much other option. We're just hoping for a little bit of movement on the, on the temporary shelter.
Okay.
So, um. In regards to the other options, if.
I, I think no matter what, I think. Speaking, I don't need to speak for the other two, but I think no matter what. We want to look at what, what it may look like if we could do something ourselves, what it might look like maybe if Lewis County wanted to. Work with us and want to work together.
So we'll probably need someone from admin taking a look at that and, and reaching out to other municipalities and seeing. How they're handling these things, um. They can commu, you can, I'm sure you can appoint someone and then have them communicate with myself and the sheriff and we can. Uh, conduct those discussions, um, then probably come back and have further workshop with, with the board.
All right. Sound okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, yeah, uh, we will adjourn. Thanks.